Alan, just let me know when you're ready for me to take down the agenda and I'll stop screen sharing. I just didn't want it to be my name across the screen while waiting for everyone else to log on. Can't hear you.
Mute. Okay, Julia won't be here. Yeah. So.
Okay, I'll go ahead. I'm going to stop screen sharing since folks are coming on and I have a couple of photos to download. From Six El Paso, I went by the site this afternoon to see if we needed any photos to refer to of where the marks are, the survey lines are.
Always forget to count myself.
Dylan, Dylan, I have a question for you. Are you related to the Becker, Becker's Lane?
I'm not. So Becker is actually a pretty common name in Germany, sort of like Smith is here.
Yeah. I just thought, because you were from Manitou, that maybe it was, you know, I don't know how many Beckers there are in Manitou.
No idea, to be honest. But I've been asked that a few times, Alan.
Yeah, I think I asked you.
Dylan's father is famous.
How so?
He's a famous climber and mountaineer.
And you take after him in that way?
Absolutely not.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, not my cup of tea.
What's your dad's name?
Brian Becker, Brian with a Y.
Ryan, my oldest son's big into climbing.
Yeah, so his more famous climbs, at least in Colorado, are in the Black Canyon. On the hallucinogen wall is one of them. In Alaska, he was the first to send up the Denali Diamond, part of the first ascent on Super. He's got quite a few.
Wow.
Alan, happy birthday, a little late.
Well, thank you.
Twenty-nine?
Always good, yeah. No, forty-nine. Always good to have another.
There you go.
Okay, well. We're missing a couple. Julie, Jean and David. Not sure if they're planning to show up.
I don't, I don't recall hearing from anybody.
Okay. Maybe wait about a couple more minutes, just to.
Sure.
Christine, we put in for our preferences for hockey next year.
You say.
Preferences for season tickets for hockey for next year, in the new stadium.
All right, I got the guy who would have gotten that standing right across the table from me, right here.
To think very kindly of us, we're putting in for the. I'll be bankrupted.
Hear that Scott? He'll be bankrupt, tip break. Are you doing it through Lorraine?
Yes, see, he knows, he's on top of it.
Yeah, he's on top of it. Oh, yeah, right? I mean, it's gonna be fantastic.
Yeah, if we could win a game or two, that would really be fantastic.
You know, it's, you know, it's bad in that, in that I'm having real COVID issues and hibernation issues. If I'm even thinking that I would enjoy going to a hockey game.
Oh, you should come. And also in the new stadium, Michelle, it's gonna be really, really fun.
It should be cool.
You're gonna be right there on the ice. It's gonna be so exciting, you know?
Yeah.
It's gonna be like a whole, like, yeah, we're all going, don't worry, I'm dragging you guys along, like.
That's, that's good.
That's just part of knowing me, right? And, yeah, and but you're right, Tip, the whole, like, winning issue. Every night, here at the house, after a game, it's no.
Yeah, yeah. My husband played pro-am hockey.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, he was scouted for professional hockey. That was long before I met him, so hey.
Yeah, never have hockey guys in my class, I'm happy they're so, they're so hardworking, you know? Because they basically have a full-time job playing hockey, so they decided to go to this kind of school, because they're so committed to learning. It's really, it's amazing.
True, get to do what you love.
Ew, you may not have all your teeth, right?
They, they, they do, because they're in college hockey, but when they go pro, within one year, they're all gone.
Oh, yeah, I, I, we have, we have a friend who played at CC, he was, he was one of the captains, and, you know, he's our age, and, yeah, like, all this, they're all, you know. Yeah, Jim Paradise, Jim Paradise, actually.
Oh, yeah, uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the way it happens.
That's the way it happens. Okay, how are we doing on attendees, Dylan?
We have six, I, let's just give Jean a couple more minutes, she usually shows up, but.
And if not, Gloria isn't in the audience.
Yeah, I haven't got a text or anything.
Tip, I think you made my husband's night by walking in the door, err, at the end of the day, and then here he is on the laptop.
The good side of hockey.
I don't know if you know Christine, but they actually did videos of both me, a whole video, a video of me, and also video of Dennis as part of a series of faculty supporters, and they would put it on the big Tron in the middle of the stadium. And so for like five years, I would be, like, before the game started, they would be like with me in my office and all that, and I, does he remember it?
He's like, I remember that, yes, yes.
Because I did a tiger lunge at the camera.
He's saying that exactly at the same time, he's like, yeah, you go, wah, at the end.
Yeah.
There's Jean, Jean is here now, why don't we bring Jean over? And we'll get started.
Right.
Somebody's TV or something is going, at least my audio is picking it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's you, Mike, FYI, I keep muting you.
Oh, my wife is wrapping up a Zoom meeting as we speak, sorry.
Okay, we're all here, so let's call this meeting to order, this is the March tenth meeting of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission, and first item is approval of the February tenth meeting.
I move approval of the minute. Meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Dylan, what's?
I have three corrections, actually.
Okay.
The first two are the commissioners who seconded the the chair and vice chair motions, I didn't catch the seconds on those, and the recording didn't either. And also a removal of the timestamp.
Also, what, hey, Mike, could you mute for now?
Sure.
And also removal of the timestamp on page nine.
Okay. Does anybody remember who seconded?
Probably me.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I think you made the motion.
Okay.
I'll say I seconded.
Okay.
Okay. So.
You seconded both of them, Carrie?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, with that, then, all in favor, or all in favor of approving the minutes? Actually, did we get a motion to approve? That's probably the first step.
Yeah, Mike, or I'm sorry, Tip made the motion and Mike seconded it.
Okay, all in favor then? And that's two, three, four, five, and one, it's two abstentions, okay, that's right, because David wasn't here and Justin, okay, great. So, moving right on, I'll start business, I'll start by describing the process. I'll call an item for consideration, and staff will describe what the request is, what their analysis and findings are, what their recommendations are, and following that, we'll allow the applicant to speak and state their case. And following that, we will open the hearing to the public, at which time anyone in the public can state their opinion on this item and, you know, pro, con, whatever their concerns are, whatever. And following that, after we hear all the public comment, we'll close the public part of the, public comment part of the hearing, and we will deliberate and vote to approve, deny, possibly table, an item, and as we go through the process, we'll be guided by the zoning code, and we don't legislate, we strictly act on what's in our municipal code and make our interpretations. So with that, does anybody have any contacts, conflicts, or ex parte contacts to disclose? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to unfinished business. The first two items are major development plan twenty-one oh one, new commercial development, I think that's a typo. Six El Paso Boulevard, Walter Harder of Six El Paso LLC applicant, and variance twenty-one oh seven, a height variance thirty-one feet, where twenty-five is required, Six El Paso Boulevard, same applicant.
So staff is requesting postponement of both of those applications, and yes, I apologize, it's not commercial development, it's residential development that's proposed. The height variance isn't before you, and so I'm not going to get into specifics, but the request has been brought down considerably, and now is for a very small request on only one of the three proposed buildings. So that is definitely a, a, a good, a good thing, the major issue was just how the height was being figured. As a lot of people and architects and contractors do, they, they don't always calculate the height the way that we calculate it and the way that it's in our code, and so just doing that reduced the height considerably, and then the applicant did go back and, and look for other heights reductions, so the request is to postpone both of those actions, both of those applications, until the April meeting, where hopefully we'll have a better idea of what zone that we're considering things in.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to postpone items two and three to the April fourteen meeting.
Second. Okay, and Carrie seconds that, any discussion? Then all in favor, raise your hand. That carries unanimously. And just out of curiosity, Michelle, when, when this comes forward, there will be a preliminary plat, will that come after the major development, or?
It hasn't been submitted as yet, so yeah, it will more than likely come after the major development, I mean, will definitely will come after it, but I suppose if they submitted it quickly, then we might bring that, you know, along with the major development, but we don't currently have it at this point.
Procedurally, we don't need that at the same time?
No, there's nothing in the code that says they have to be considered the same time, it just needs to be considered and, and processed.
I mean, things like no build areas, all that.
I have asked the applicants to address that in the major development, it should be talked about at least to confirm whether there is any anticipated subdivision waiver or not, and so we'll at least have that information.
Okay, well, I don't want to belabor it, I was just curious.
Sure.
So moving on, next item is rezoned twenty-one oh one, rezoned low density residential to general residential public hearing, Six El Paso Boulevard, Walter Harder of Six El Paso LLC applicant.
Just a, a, a point here, I wasn't sure, the item eight under new business is also a postponement, I wasn't sure whether the commission wanted to go ahead and move that up and get that taken care of, or if you wanted to wait until after we went through the rest of the agenda items.
Oh, no, you know, thank you for bringing that up, because I think I talked about trying to do that procedurally, so we don't have people sitting around, I just missed that, so.
Right.
Before we move on, would someone like to move to move item eight before item four in the agenda?
Motion to move item eight in our agenda to before item four.
Okay, is there a second?
I can second.
I'll second it.
Okay, then, all in favor of moving the item up? Okay, so that carries, so with that, we'll move on, for next item is major conditional use twenty-one oh one. Food vending at seven twenty-two, seven twenty-four Manitou Avenue, Brandy and Billy Chisholm applicants on behalf of Frank Ericson owner.
So staff is requesting postponement of the major conditional use permit application to the April fourteenth Planning Commission meeting. Actually, at the time the application was made, it was scheduled initially for the April meeting, we had moved it up onto this agenda, hoping that you know, that we could get through and, and kind of process it a little quicker. There are, we're, we're still addressing some utility issues, and so actually going to hearing wasn't possible, so we need that extra month to, you know, work with the applicants regarding that, and to make sure that the application is, is complete and that the proposal is final. So we're requesting postponement to the April meeting.
Thank you. Is there a motion to postpone? Carrie's moved to postpone, is there a second?
Move to postpone item eight to the April fourteen, twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous, so. So now we'll move on to item four, it's rezoned low density residential to general residential public hearing, Six El Paso Boulevard, Walter Harder of Six El Paso LLC applicant.
So as Chairman Delwich noted, this is a public hearing on this rezoning request, the initial hearing was held in January, and it's been postponed a couple of times as we worked on both public notice and on the finishing up the application. The municipal code, staff has gone through the municipal code and, and provided the information and requirements criteria for the justification of a rezoning. The subject property was formerly a motel, and the buildings associated with that former operation were removed a number of years ago. This property does straddle, the, the entire property straddles the Manitou Springs and Colorado Springs municipal boundaries, and it's separate, it's, it's basically about one-third in Manitou, two-thirds in Colorado Springs, and the applicant is proposing a a joint development, I guess you could say, it's, it's a continuous development on both parcels. And they are getting ready to initiate the construction on the Colorado Springs side of the property, which has been approved, and, and they should be starting the, the site work fairly soon. We did recommend, the planning department did recommend rezoning of the property. It, it's to facilitate the proposed building form, so as we discussed at the last meeting, this is not a request for additional density over what would be allowed under the current zone, it's the building form, the current single-family zone, does, low-density zone does not allow attached single-family homes, but the general residential zone does allow attached single-family homes. The Manitou Springs currently defines both building types as single-family, but the attached or detached is what the issue is, staff's provided some information showing the allowed density under the zones and the proposed density, noting that there's no change in, in the proposed density between the two, between the request, under the low-density residential and general residential. Staff did provide the public comment from both the initial meeting, and then there's been a few that have come in following that initial meeting. The applicant did do a neighborhood meeting on January twenty-seventh, I believe the, the date is, and had pretty good attendance, and there's information that's provided in the, following the staff report regarding both that neighborhood meeting, and then the previous neighborhood meetings they'd had during the Colorado Springs process as well. In the staff report, I note that there was some suggestions that we provide a variance for the building type rather than the rezoning. You know, staff just wanted to note that a variance and a rezoning are not comparable or interchangeable actions. Variances have a pretty high level, high set of criteria, hardship, findings, and that type of thing that have to be made. And so that is why staff was recommending a rezoning, a variance is basically to be used when there's not another potential solution. Rezoning is a potential solution rather than requiring a variance, so that's, staff is, is not supporting pushing this into a variance, especially since we're not confident that the variance criteria could, you know, might not be met. So the commission should consider the criteria for a zone change per section eighteen oh five oh eight oh of the zoning ordinance. That's items A through, I believe it's G now, so staff has provided some information on the comprehensive plan or plan Manitou requirements. Again, the future land use plan, when looking at that, it's there's some questions about, you know, doesn't appear that our current future land use plan was looked at in a, at a parcel level, it was more, much more broad, and so it's, it's hard to strictly apply that future land use map. There are some issues that, that have arisen in just about every rezone that's been asked for in the last couple of years in relation to that map. So there is some comparison regarding the low-density residential, which is consistent, consistent with the single-family neighborhood designation in the land use plan, and the general residential is consistent with the central neighborhood, and staff's provided some comparisons there, noting that the future land use map isn't prescriptive, and so the proposed density is approximately three point seven five dwelling units an acre, and so that falls with the, within the density range envisioned for the, both the single-family neighborhood designation and the, the central neighborhood designation, and staff also provided some land use policies that relate to the proposed rezoning. Let's see, items. Item B is compliance with all stat, applicable statutory provisions. By seeking approvals through the city's land use and subdivision regulations, compliance with the regulations are, will be evaluated under each application and assuming approval, they would be then in compliance with those statutory provisions. If there's, item C is whether there's been a substantial change in the characteristics of the neighborhood since the land was last zoned. There have been minor changes in the character of the area since the land was zoned. The Garden of the Gods RV Park expanded and incorporated a motel in Manit, in Manitou Springs City Limits that used to be accessed and fronted on El Paso. The Fields Park was created west of the El Paso-Becker's intersection, there have been some other townhomes operated in the, or, I'm sorry, constructed in the larger area. The major change to, to this area will be the part of this overall development, which has been improved by Colorado Springs. That will be a major change to the area, and the intent is to be consistent, both within the area currently and with that other part of the property. Item D, whether the rezoning will adversely impact the provisions of public facilities and services. There any, there are no indications the proposed redevelopment to provide the six dwellings will adversely impact public facilities or services. Certainly, this will be examined more in depth with traffic study and drainage reports and all of that through the major development process. The applicant's done pretty robust investigation, both in designing the other part of the property, but it was really all designed pretty much at the same time. And so they've, they've had to really look at how things work, they've had to check into utilities, there's no indication that you know, this would outstrip our ability either on, you know, by provision of the, the street access or utilities or police or fire services. And there are some improvements that are proposed, proposed, such as a sidewalk along the property frontage to help start making those connections between the properties. Whether the re, item E, whether the rezoning will result in a higher risk to natural hazards and geologic hazards, and whether adequate mitigation for such hazards is provided. So the rezoning in and of itself doesn't impact the risk of natural or geologic hazards, the property is not subject to floodplain restrictions. The plans submitted for the major development, again, will be reviewed for compliance with and mitigation of as, as applicable. Identified hazards, the proposed construction will have to comply with the standards in chapter eighteen ten risk reduction and mitigation in regard to both wildland fire and geologic hazards. One advantage that to the current proposal may be that it's somewhat clustered on the lower parts of the property, and there may be opportunities to both preserve, or, you know, preserve the natural features, avoid geologic, any geologic hazards that might exist, and also, you know, take care of any wildland hazards. But that, again, will be a part of the robust. But that again will be a part of the robust review of the major development. Item F, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding land uses. Staff went into this fairly in detail at the last meeting, but I'll just quickly note that the property directly to the west is a converted motel that has quite a number of properties. It is in the low-density residential zone, but frankly, it probably is more consistent with the general residential zone. Then directly across on that same side of El Paso, but directly across via Maria Teresa, there is an area of gender residential zoning that has apartments, townhomes and single-family homes. It's, it's kind of a mixture. On the opposite side of the street from the property, there is the RV park to the west of the property. On the other side of the complex is Buffalo Lodge. There is a horse stables to the north of this property. Across El Paso, there's, as I mentioned, the RV park. There is a mobile home park with forty-five units that are located on that property. And then the school ball fields and the Fields Park are farther on down. So staff feels that the the proposal is compatible with surrounding land uses. Staff was frankly surprised that there wasn't some more density proposed just because of being right across from commercial and having, you know, a real mixture of, of housing types, more dense, more dense development and housing units around it, but was happy to, to see that the density was not being proposed to increase. G, whether the subject land is suitable for the proposed land use. So there isn't any indication the subject land isn't suitable for residential use and rezoning from the low-density to general residential zone designation. As I've noted, doesn't change the proposed density. So other than the building type, these are both residential zones. The property is currently you know, subject to residential zoning and it was, it's going, just being asked to go to another residential zone. So staff doesn't see that there's any indication that it's not suitable. An additional criteria that's not listed under the items A through G, but is included in the rezoning regulations is the proximity requirement that states that the proposed area must abut on all or part of at least one side, an existing district of the same general classification. This proposal does abut residential zoning and so therefore the proposed residential zoning change conforms to that proximity requirement. So the applicants have provided the items listed in the next part of the staff report. You know, the owner of the property, the legal, the current legal description, which obviously will change with replating the property. The mailed notification that was, that was done and the certificates of mailing were provided to the city. And staff again notes that a neighborhood meeting for this, this, this proposal and proposed part of the development was held on January twenty-seventh. So you have information regarding that. The project narrative submitted does address the criteria stated in section eighteen oh five oh eight oh A through G, the approval criteria, which staff just noted above. And so that is also in the applicant's narrative, their, their thoughts on that. The supporting documents, staff provided a section of the current zoning map that is in the staff report showing what the different zones are and their proximity. To the right of this paragraph is a vicinity map, just in case somebody's not real certain where the property is and we do need to have a graphic and legal description of the property provided by the applicant surveyor for the rezoning ordinance. We generally like, instead of just copying the legal description out of the assessors off the assessor's website, it's good to have a surveyor look at that because sometimes the assessor's website will cut those descriptions off. And they're not complete, what, what you're seeing on the screen may not be complete. So I, I want to make sure that that's just looked at and confirmed if nothing else. Staff hasn't required any other supporting documents because this is a one-owner project. So something like a petition wouldn't be required. As was requested at the initial meeting, the applicant did update their narrative and addressed the public facilities and services impact report. That is in the narrative and the information as, as required is noted. Staffs reviewed the information and again finds no issues that would indicate the rezoning request shouldn't be, be approved. The applicant's information seems to further support the approval criteria. Cause there are some relations between the public facilities and services impact report and things like the provision of services and that type of thing. Citizen participation plan, again, the, following the January planning commission meeting, the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting that was well-attended and I believe they got a lot of good feedback and information from that. Staff's provided in the report, a comparison of the permitted uses in the low-density zone, the low-density residential zone and the general residential zones purpose statement and also the permitted uses in that zone for the, for the planning commission and public's information. So staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of RE two thousand twenty-one oh one, RE twenty-one oh one to rezone the property known as six El Paso Boulevard from low-density residential to general residential to facilitate redevelopment with the following condition. The rezoning is approved based on the proposed density of a maximum of six residential units and subject to the approval of a major development plan for the property by the city of Manitou Springs. And then staff recommends the finding of the rezoning request meets the required criteria in section eighteen point oh one oh point oh five oh of the city zoning code, particularly at the lower than allowed density proposed and meets the proximity requirement to other residentially zoned property. And I'm happy to try and answer questions.
Any questions?
Thanks, Michelle. I just had a quick question. If you could refresh my memory, I should know this, but I wonder if you could refresh my memory. Is there a difference in the height allowed between the general residential and the low-density residential?
I don't believe there is, and I could go quickly look, but I believe both of them are twenty-five feet. Alan's saying yes, because I think he looked it up. I actually did run across something today that I made note of and yes. There is, the, the height requirement in both zones, the base height requirement is the same.
Okay, thank. Other questions? Mike?
Michelle, do you remember how many units were at the Beverly Hills motel? Just a ballpark?
I, I think it was, I want to say maybe ten or twelve, but it, it was a lot of, of small buildings that went kind of crescent shape across the lot. And I did look at that up at one point and I know I've got it in my notes in the file, but I can't remember what it is.
Other questions? I just have a couple right now anyway. Regarding setbacks, that's another area that's significantly different between general and LDR. And so basically if we approve this later on down the road, then any owner could put a accessory unit like seven and a half feet from the adjacent property. Or, or you know, basically we're, it's not just density that we're, we're restricting density, but we're opening ourselves up to different setbacks. And you know, we had a discussion last month about the setbacks on another property and wondered if we could make some kind of a statement that the setback was only a certain amount of the property and, and you said that we, we, that wasn't allowed, that if we give them a setback for a certain area, they get it for forever. So in this case where we're we're stipulating you know, for one thing, dense, you know, setbacks, part of the question would be, can we stipulate LDR setbacks even though we're rezoning? The, the second part would be how is this any different when we say we're rezoning based on a certain density? How, how sticky is that requirement? If, if we can't tell someone, i- if we can't restrict a setback variance, how is this any different? You know, I'm, I'm very concerned that, you know, so, so this project goes on and they get ready to go and things change. I just, you know, I'm just not sure what, what the difference is, why, why we can compel them to limit their density once we rezone in this case.
Well, because I think there's a couple of things. One is that the proposed density is part and parcel of the request. They, they have noted what the density is that they're proposing. It's certainly if that proposal went away, somebody else bought the property and they came in to do something different, doesn't mean you have to, to allow that. In regard to that setback issue, I don't want to get into that a lot, but we did look at that and the setback, say a front setback. Even though part in the specific instance you were talking about, part of the building, if you looked at the side setback, well, that, that was not an issue because it was getting closer to the home. But they were actually proposing more bulk into that front setback by the length of the building. So yeah, you did have, you actually could have jurisdiction over that. The other thing that makes this a little bit different is that these being townhomes will be on townhome lots, which in, in general usually conform almost you know, either at, right around the footprint or very close to the footprint. So if something else was proposed to be constructed, the homeowners association would have to agree to that. And there, I, there may be, there are usually restrictions on, you know, what they have to do to meet that kind of, of get that kind of approval from the homeowner, the board or, or whatever has to approve that. But also there's likely to be a good part of this property, or at least some of the property that would be in a no build area because of the slope. And so that will also restrict where somebody could propose to build in regard to setback.
Okay. So basically we don't have a lot of control if, if they want to build, if the homeowners association said they wanted to build observatory or something right on, you know, seven and a half feet from the property line, they could.
Well, they'd have to meet height requirements. They'd have to meet no build area, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, no, I understand and I get that. Okay. And my other question is when this first came up, the applicant came to talk, was there any discussion or any coaching, like this is an LDR zone? Why don't you think about doing single-family detached dwellings as, as per the zone? I mean, is it always if a developer comes and they say, we want to do X, Y, and Z, we just automatically say, oh yeah, here's how you do it?
Well, you know, it's part of our role to, to tell them what the processes would need to be to do, you know, whatever they're, they're thinking about proposing. If we think there's going to be an issue or we identify an issue or a concern, then we will, we will tell them that. That was not identified. You know, we don't necessarily have, have a crystal ball and don't necessarily always know when something's going to be a you know, a concern or, or have more scrutiny than maybe what other applicant, applicants have had or you know, where there's a more sensitive area. Sometimes we are aware of it and are able to talk with people about it. Other times you know, it, it can be a surprise to us as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Tell me for the staff. Okay. Okay, with that, let's bring the applicant over.
I don't see Walt Harder, but is T D G the part of the group there, Michelle?
Gosh.
I see Kristen Cotera and another guy named Benjamin.
Bring her over. If you're a part of the development group, if you could raise your hand and we'll make sure we get you over.
Okay, it looks like you have three people there at the top, up to okay. Be nice if you could turn your video on.
Thank you.
Okay, and whoever's starting, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Kristen Cotera. My business address or home address?
The home address?
Home address is one zero six Saddle Mountain Road. Colorado Springs, Colorado, being the zip code.
Oh, that's good enough. Okay, so you have the floor now.
So I want to thank Michelle. You did a great job explaining the, the current, you know, application that, that we have with the rezone here. I don't believe I had, have a whole lot more to add besides that we, we are trying to come in with, with the project on a, on a lower level than what we are allowed in the current zone. So we're, we're trying to be as delicate as possible. We're still making a, a great set of three duplexes on the property. Myself, Mark and Mike Bramlett here, along with Walt, have really tried our best to work with Michelle and Christine throughout the planning process to understand all of our restrictions and then the scope. So we really, we really attempted as, as much as we can to comply with the, the spirit of the Manchusians code as, as well as trying to get a good quality design on the property. If, if Mark or Mike, if you can add anything to that, please do.
No, pretty good. Thank you, Kristen.
Okay. Okay, would anybody like to have any questions for the applicant? Mike?
Do, does anybody know how many people attended that neighborhood meeting?
Um, I, I can find that number for you. I want to say it was between twenty and twenty-five people that attended. Yeah, I, I could go and count the applicants on the, on the list, but I don't have an exact number for you.
That's fine. I, I, I saw the minutes. Thank you for providing that. How was the, what was the overall vibe of that meeting?
You know, I, I feel like we started meeting out on a very good foot as far as just explaining what we were actually applying for. I know there were some misinformation out there. And so we, we cleared that up. The, the end result really ended up being about height. I think height was really the main concern for a lot of the attendees. They, they certainly had questions about, about the rezone and about why we needed the rezone. If we weren't requesting any higher density, I think there was confusion with the public and maybe it's a matter of not understanding the code quite, quite well enough or thought that a rezone automatically means higher density. So we cleared that up, that we really are only asking for six units when we're allowed much more than that. So I, I think we really did help the public understand the, the true scope of it. And then at the end, it really was about height, which, which like Michelle noted, we did work to reduce that as much as we could as well as just look at the calculations in the more correct manner.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have Um, I just have one. I'm curious, like as you, at some point, I don't know, you know, I would have thought it would have been known before the project started, or when you, when you started working on it, the Colorado Springs part, that there was an awareness that the zone limits of the magnitude portion were detached, single family dwellings. I'm curious, was any consideration considered of possibly doing? You know, complying with the existing zone district?
There were many times made to, yes, um, look at single family detached homes. The way that the lot and the access to those lots made it a little bit more difficult for us to, to look at. And we would have, we would have had a couple more variances to apply for, um, because the lots would have been a little bit bigger than the single family lot size. So we would have still been looking at a couple of variances. Just ended up that the, the owner Walt, um, wanted a cohesive looking project and wanted to have that whole parcel be more of a unified look. Um, and we, we, we did have several pre at meetings with Michelle and Christine, and that's really where we learned about the rezoning, um, idea, you know, and that we would have to go down that path if that is what was desired, um, by the developer.
So, so would it be fair to say that the reason you were wanting the, um, attached, single family dwellings, the duplexes is to maximize the amount of units you can put on a property? Is it, would that be a fair statement?
Hey, Ethan, I need you to be quiet. Sorry. My four year old just came into the room. I, I think it, I think it'd be fair to say that, um, we felt like this was the, the best use of the site. To get the, hey, I really need to be quiet, Ethan. I apologize. Um, I, I think, I think the six units that we proposed fit the site the best and, and also respond to the hillside the best without having to alter it too much and to really get those units nestled in the best. I think it's just the, a matter of fitting the site best. That, that's why we're, we're looking at the, the three buildings.
Yeah. So well, conceivably it could have been three single family detached dwellings rather than six attached.
It could have.
Could have. So basically the motivation is to get more units by changing the zoning and doing attached dwellings.
Yeah, the, the, the real. Hi Walt, yeah, if you want to.
Hey, I'm terribly sorry. I'm a bit of a tech idiot.
Okay. Could you, um, state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Walt Harder. I live at One Marland in Colorado Springs.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, you, you probably know the history of this property as well as anyone. And, uh, the first attempt, I think about three years ago was for a sixty odd unit apartment complex, and then it went down to a fifty ish unit condo complex. Then I entered the picture and proposed a thirty nine unit condo complex. And after our initial public meeting, realized that density was, was the strongest concern of the people in the area. For, for all the reasons that people are concerned about density. And so we relooked at the whole project and during this time we, uh, met with Manatee Springs at the very, very onset of this. And discussed what we wanted to do. And at that time they proposed the rezone to achieve a higher density, recognizing the housing shortage in this area at all price points. And the need to try to accommodate that to some extent. So we took that feedback and came back with this eighteen unit complex, which again is considerably lower density than even is allowed on this property, both on the Manitou and the spring side. And in subsequent meetings with Manitou was very well received as far as their, their willingness to proceed with a project of that density. So, while we acknowledge that single family homes can be built there, we moved forward with information and the belief that a slightly higher, uh, or excuse me, attached homes would not be a major issue. So, so if it is, I guess this is something a little new to us.
Okay. Well, yeah, there's, um, there are lots of different differing opinions within the community. We have had some, some projects that have disappointed some in the community, just based on the mass and the, you know, just the presentation and how it fits with other neighborhood projects. But anyway, I was just curious.
And that's understandable. I'd like to think that we've, we've extensively addressed the, uh, suitability for this project of the neighborhood, given all the surrounding variety of things. And while speaking, let me address one other thing. What we're proposing is just what we're proposing. We are not, this is not a bait and switch. And, and I feel like for the past three meetings, there's been a strong sense that we're somehow going to go for an approval for one thing and then build something else. And, and that's not our intentions, not our desire. And I have said a number of times that I am happy to agree to build what we propose to build and nothing more. No higher density, no ADUs, no sheds in the back, no observatories on the hillside. We're, we're, we're just trying to do what we're trying to do. There, there's no hidden agenda here. There's no secret mission. This is just what we want.
Yeah, just for the record, you know, I, I'm probably someone who brought up that concern and it was nothing intended to impugn you or your organization. It's more like the knowledge that, when we rezone something, it, it doesn't get tied to the owner and, and the ownership could change, you know, anything could happen. And I guess.
Why don't we restrict the future use?
Pardon?
Why, why don't we simply put into the approval documents that this is restricted to three buildings, six units, period. We, we, we have said a number of times, we'd be happy to agree to those terms such that whether it's me or John Doe, you know, I, I'm not going to sell this. This is my project. I'm going to do it. But let's just say I died tomorrow and, and somebody else took it over. That person would be subject to the same agreement and I'm happy to, to agree to that.
Okay. Um, were any other questions for the applicant? Anybody? And do you have anything else you'd like to add? Before we go, uh, oh, Jean.
I'd just like to address his comments, knowing that we have faced in the past a very similar complex who then did things that weren't part of the original plan. The other thing I think that why some people are a bit doubtful is because, you know, there's a real cry out for single family homes in Manitou. Not just we need more space for people. But there was another complex and I remember when it came through, which was quite a few years ago, saying basically that, uh, that, you know, they were going to build some townhomes or condos. And, uh, and basically they had real trouble getting them sold. Why? Because it wasn't what people really were wanting. What they were wanting was single family homes. And it just seems like this piece of property would have been an ideal site for single family homes, not townhomes. Not everybody wants two story. I happen to be older and, um, and I'm planning on selling my house at some point. And wanting something that isn't a two story townhouse in Manitou. I think there's a lot of people after that. So I think kind of maybe our question on that was just, you know, uh, it's not just density as far as we need more space for people. It's what kind of space do people want? But I'm not questioning the, the applicant's integrity or doing what they say they're doing is like, like I say, I think some of that doubt comes from, we got stung once before. That's the best way I can put it.
Ms. Robel, I think your points are, are, are great and I get it. And, and having done this for a while, I've been the second or third guy to the plate and, and been the, oh no, you're not going to burn us guy. Uh, and, and I get that. And I, I, again, I want to reiterate, I have no issues whatsoever. Agreeing to build exactly what we proposed and, and writing into the approval documents that those terms. To your point about, you know, the single family houses, we would love to be able to build those. You might notice that the single family homes now being built in the, in the region are being, uh, they're, they're being built out in the cattle land of the east because it's the only place you can get dirt cheap enough to do it. If you could kindly just drop the prices of Manitou Springs dirt in half, I think we could accommodate you. But unfortunately the economics don't work and that therein lies the rub. I, I totally understand the problem. And what people want to buy is great, but what they can afford is, is a whole nother matter. And, and we do our best to try to accommodate both those and find a balance in there that can work. So I totally, I, I absolutely get where you're coming from. And this is, this is the, um, well, probably the consummate issue faced by developers and, and those who regulate. I get it.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Oh, before we let you go or any more comments or anything more you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Thanks. If we need more, if we have more questions for you, we'll bring you back.
Yes, sir.
Stay around. So at this point, we can open the hearing to the public. And if anybody would like to comment on this, just raise your hand and we'll bring you over. Okay. So I don't see any hands go up. No, maybe. Give it a couple of seconds.
Yeah, it looks like Elizabeth Woodward has her hand raised.
Oh, good. Okay. I didn't see. Okay. Let's bring her over. Okay, um, you can, if you like, you can turn on your video and, um, state your name and address for the record, please.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Woodward. My name, my address is 13579 West 23rd Place in Golden. Um, I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the owner and operator of Academy Riding Stables, which is the property immediately to the north of the subject property. And just wanted to reiterate to you a couple of comments that are in our written comments that were submitted. As a adjoining landowner, there are some specific concerns about the development that, you know, exist regardless of the rezoning, but the rezoning because of the potential for future density increases, um, does kind of add to that concern. And the two main concerns I want to speak to tonight are any change in grading and increase in imperviousness and the impact that that'll have on both the stables property and their sole access, which is an easement across the eastern portion of this property. Um, and then the second big concern is just increased visibility at the stables in general to El Paso Boulevard. The stables currently has problems with people coming off of El Paso to try and feed and pet and interact with the horses. And any concerns about development and obviously the more density, the greater concerns about people trying to interact with the stables, the liability that can cause their building out residences in this area, building out paved, paved roads into the property and then putting the sidewalks in. So again, understand that those are some very specific concerns, but do kind of come into play with all these applications being considered together. And with the, the rezoning in particular, and the potential for the increase in density down the road. Wanted to just make sure and get those in front of you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, let's see anymore. I don't see any other hands raised. So if anybody else would like to speak before we close the public comment part of this hearing, raise your hand. And I don't see any. So at this point we'll close the public comment and we are ready to deliberate. You know, if, if it would be okay, I would wondering if I, um, I'd like to share the screen just for a minute. I had, just want to show a graphic of the property and what some of my concerns are. So let's see. Okay. Sorry, I just have to give myself acts. Okay. Okay. So does everybody see this graphic?
I can see it.
Okay.
I can see it.
Oh, this is from, I think the last page of the staff report. And I just sort of cropped it. So what I'm showing is the Manitou portion of the property on the, on the right, the, the fancy color is the, um, the slope analysis. And the red would be clearly no build. That's like thirty percent or greater slopes. Blue is twenty to twenty nine percent. And so, so that the message of this in here, let's see right there. This is the whole thing. It's all the, the yellow. That's the Colorado Springs part. And, um, so right there, that's what we're looking at. And in reality, to me, this looks more like a hillside low density zone than a LDR general residential. So the reality is that that eastern portion of the Manitou section is not, isn't that big? And, um, and so the, in any case, there's, that, that's where the development's going to happen. And, and this is not unique to this property. This is consistent throughout the neighborhood. And, um, there, there are dozens of properties that are twenty, thirty thousand square feet that have a single dwelling on them. And the reason is not, you know, not because people wanted a big lot, it's because it's, they're just not buildable. That's a reality in this neighborhood. And, um, so it's not like, I, I don't think any developer gets a prize for having low density. You know, how, you know, building below the allowed density. It's, you know, just reality is it's not possible. And, um, you know, and this is, you know, clearly in our standards of eighteen oh six, ten, we say the maximum density is not guaranteed and relies on the availability of services, topography, preservation of environmental and historic features, available access and surrounding near neighborhood character for appropriate density. So, you know, I just throw it out that when I look at this, you know, it's like sixty seven or sixty five thousand square feet or something. If you divide by three, you could conceivably get about three lots of about twenty three thousand square feet. And that's fairly standard for the neighborhood. You know, the, I think I counted out of forty two properties nearby in, in the Manitou section. Nineteen of the forty two. in in the Manitou section, nineteen of the forty-two are exceed twenty-three thousand square feet for the single family dwelling. And, you know, if you cut it, if you say, okay, let's make the lot smaller, make it like divide by four, they're about sixteen thousand. Still, you know, it's like all but about sixteen parcels in the neighborhood are that density or that that lot size. So basically, it's not a surprise that the density is low. And and that's a, you know, that's just reality of this lot. It just this parcel, you can't, you know, there, there's no way you can build in in the red or the blue that easily, maybe a little bit in the blue, but very carefully. And my concern that that comes from this is, you know, twofold. One is just the 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 character of the neighborhood. You know, as Jean said, it's, you know, single family dwellings. And if we put three duplexes in this section here, besides they're they're just changing the flavor and the character of this neighborhood. The mass it's kind of on a slope still, even though it's, you know, going to be down on the flatter part, there's going to be a big wall, a big mass. And we got really beat up on another project recently just by the sheer mass, the feeling of how 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 big and how intense it was. And for that reason, I'm, I'm really, I'm having a hard time embracing this. And thinking there might be some alternatives. And you know, just just to sort of, you know, instead of having these three big clumps of mass to to try to stick with the intent, you know, what the neighborhood is right now. And you know, that, you know, and and the other other thing that's obvious is the you know, regardless of what what we say, the next developer on the next parcel is going to say, hey, we want to do duplexes, we want to do townhouses, they got to do it like we want to too. And and, you know, we can say all we want that one one development doesn't necessarily have any kind of precedence for the other. But even even tonight in in another staff report, where we're talking about setbacks for a garage, what are we doing? We're looking at seventeen other garages in the neighborhood. So so I think we'd be foolish not to expect that what we do tonight is going to set the the path for the future. And, you know, there are lots of those giant lots. There's actually a couple lots in the neighborhood that are bigger than this parcel that have only a single detached dwelling on them. And, you know, why don't they just ask for rezoning? And, you know, throw up another duplex, throw up a fourplex in several cases. So anyway, that's that's my thinking. So David, yes?
Let's see, Alan. Clearly, across El Paso, it's not single family homes, it's RV park and and trailers, but specifically right next door where what was previously a motel, that is not single family house, homes, right?
Well, right now, it's it's vacant land and it's going to be duplexes.
You mean, you mean just west of the proposed project on the Manitou portion?
Yeah, well, yeah, just west, there's an old motel. It has been, you know, converted into long-term residential use.
Yeah, okay.
Carrie?
Yeah, I I ride my bike along the in this area all the time. And I I went through today and drove the neighborhood. And there are quite a bit of condos. It felt like I was going motel, mobile home park condos, townhouses. I mean, it's quite a variety in that area right now. It seemed to me as you go, when you started Manitou where they had that stake and, you know, up through the fields, it is quite a mix all along El Paso. To me, it didn't, this doesn't seem like that is that outside the character of what's already exists in that neighborhood right now.
Yeah, I think as you go to the north, the reality is different. And and I, you know, and I guess here, you know, we we haven't seen the details of the buildings and the mass, but I I'm just, I'm probably scarred by the very negative reaction we've gotten from a recent project. And the dissatisfaction of the neighborhood by the the mass. And and I I think that's why I'm I'm really having trouble with this. I mean, I I want this project to be successful. I live in the neighborhood. Its success will be my, you know, won't hurt me. And I I think it will be successful. And I'm just questioning whether it's necessary to have, you know, there could be some still, it still could be a cohesive project, even if the west end of it had single family dwellings. But Jean, I see your hand up.
I agree with you. I I I just know from past, you know as well as I do, we had a project several years ago that was, like I say, condo townhouses. And at the time, they even pitched them as being affordable. And they couldn't sell them. And they became rentals. And to this day, most of them are leased. They never were able to sell them. Why? Because it's not what people really wanted. And that's my other concern. Yeah, the market's hot right now. And and yes, every developer in the world would like to put duplexes or townhouses on a lot. But, you know, I I think I'd much rather see the way, I mean, it was zoned that way for purpose. I think that's why well, it is low density residential. I'd much rather see three houses. I realize that financially, that's not as much of a a benefit to the to the developer. But I do think it would be a really good move for our community because it's what people want. And we just don't have we have very little housing stock, you know, so few things on the market. But, you know, in single family houses, I just think that that's and I know that there's certain parts of planning that the density because of taxes looks different, but I really would like to see it stay low density residential.
Other thoughts, comments? Mike?
Um, I I think that if the Colorado Springs side of this has already been approved, so that those townhomes are going to be built, then three more are going to fit in very nicely with the with the neighborhood. Am I wrong?
Um, I, I don't know, I guess.
Well, I mean, I mean, the Colorado Springs side has been approved, so they're coming. So you know, we talked about what has changed in the neighborhood in the in the staff report. Well, that's, that's going to be a big change. And three more are gonna are gonna fit right in.
You know, I guess, I don't know, I submit that three single family dwellings could easily fit in too. And it's just a, it's a matter of we set off on this path and that's what we're going to get. And, you know, I I hate to think that Colorado Springs planning defines our planning. I think, you know, we should have some say over it. And you know, it's
Well, of course, but you know, the 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 general gist where this is going is, does it fit in on El Paso? And and El Paso is a whole mixture of different things. And and this is, this is coming whether we like it or not. So I think it should be considered.
Okay. Any other comments? David?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's already determined at this point that there will be duplexes to the east, stables to the north, trailer parks to the south, and this converted motel. I still, it comes across as multifamily to me, not at least not single family residential. So this would be the nominally if it were to be developed as a single family homes.
Well, not not really. The adjacent to the north, the northwest, it's all single family. But, you know, that's
Yeah, just the immediate adjacencies.
Yeah, sure. And, you know, and I I guess I'm, you know, there's absolutely no argument there. My my comment would be that the adjacency argument could be dangerous for anybody, anywhere, you know, we have so, you know, we have a strip of commercial right through the heart of the residential areas. And, you know, you could use that argument for commercializing more because it's next to another commercial or you could, you know, you know, anywhere you could, you could do that. So I'm, I don't always find that as a plausible argument. Tip?
I have a question for Michelle. Um, how was it that this was that it's still this low density residential and had a and had a motel on it?
Um, I believe that the motel existed. And I, I don't know exactly when the low density residential zone was put in place. It was created, I believe it was in the early eighties or late seventies. And so I think when the, when that zone was was installed, it it was put in over that property. I don't know whether it was just, you know, where where things were really looked at at a parcel level, or whether it just seemed to make sense because it was, you know, adjacent to other area that was being zoned LDR or or exactly what.
So I guess that for me, you know, I feel like I can see both sides of the argument. I think we all can. And so it's, it's difficult. On the one hand, the the developer developer bought the property knowing what it was, it was zoned. And so I think that 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 there's some onus, a very strong onus, that doing that due diligence, that they would be developing, developing it in conformity with what the zone, the zoning requires. And so I do feel that there's something a little discomforting about changing it because the developer, we're, the developer would like to basically have more units. I I think that is something that gives me pause. At the same time, in terms of the neighborhood, I don't think that the property's use was conforming to the zone traditionally by virtue of having a motel on it. And the motel was in some ways as Karen, Mike, I think we're indicating in keeping with the diversity of uses in that on that El Paso portion. So I, in some ways, I guess I see a difference between, I'm not, I I I see that seems to me that because of that and because of the motel having been on the property and the zoning, the zone was overlaid on it, that it's not, in some ways, it seems to me it wouldn't be setting a precedent for the single housing, large lots to the north of it because it's already been out of compliance. And the immediate surroundings are not like that. So I guess that in that way, I I I don't know whether we would be setting a precedent. So that makes me a little bit more favorably predisposed to changing the zoning. I also would say that the applicant said that he would be happy, you know, I was a little confused when we've been talking this time and last time about whether we could guarantee the setbacks and all that. And it seems to me that what the applicant said was that we could put all those kind of requirements in that we that we see fit to put in to guarantee that a future, in the future, the property couldn't be developed in ways that would be more troubling. So I think that's also something that we, I think we should feel free to put those requirements in if if we would like to. And it also seems that the 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 immediate neighborhood seems, which had real reservations, seems to have felt that many of their concerns have been answered. Other, you know, so that's something that I'm, so I don't know, these are kind of some random thoughts, but I just want to put them out there.
Yeah, you know, I, you know, I think one thing that the hotel was like, I think one unit was partially in Manitou. And most of the Manitou parcel was that hillside and never developed. So, you know, it's kind of a weird thing when they, I don't know when Manitou moved their, you know, acquired that section, I think it was back in the fifties that, you know, they just sort of drew a line from whatever that section line was. And it just happened to slice through one of the units. So you know, the the difference was, you know, the the motel, they were little, little cottages. And and we're talking about fairly substantial mass and and, you know, being on that hillside, you know, where it's the first thing you're going to see when you come up El Paso Boulevard and it's going to block most of the the hillside. And, you know, that is one of our values is having our open space. It's a and and this is going to change that in a significant way, just like when you write, drive down Becker's Lane now. The bungalow look is sort of different because of the development there. And and it is, you know, like most of Manitou, there's historical stuff and and things change over time. And it's just, we're just defining how we want to change it. And you know, I've spoken, I've said enough, so I'll just shut up now.
Michelle, if there was, if there was a deed restriction, at what point in the process would you, would we do that?
I would think during the major development and or the subdivision, we could add plat notes to a plat. And in the major development where you're actually looking at the building, you know, configurations and considering that kind of thing, then you could certainly, you know, add some conditions there. I suppose you could try to add something here, but you're not really looking at the development.
Right.
You know, specifics. So it would seem to me to go better if you were going to you know, make good on the developer's offer to do that under those subsequent applications.
Okay.
David?
I I'm obviously the novice here. I don't know, Christine, if you have any guidance here, but it's it's probably not an issue, or it would not have come about this way. But I have to admit, just initially, I'm uneasy saying, well, we've been burned in the past and potentially penalizing a developer who is, as Tip just pointed out, has offered to to walk himself into the restrictions that have been incorporated in the current design. Maybe it's not, maybe it's not an issue.
Well, you know, I, I'm never, for those of you who've gotten to know me over the last year, I'm never a fan of, of um, you know, looking, of saying, well, that's the way it has been and that's the way it must be going forward. Um, but on the other hand, there are lessons to be learned from the past, right? Michelle and I, and including Karen Burchell, uh, a senior long-term, long-range planner for the community have had significant philosophical discussions about this. Um, and I will say that not just because, not just because it affects this one subject that we're speaking about tonight, but because this, this is critical in terms of laying some foundation for how we move forward this year. We have several more projects coming our way. Some are much bigger. And we will have not different questions to consider. Um, you know, with this, with this project, you know, so I'll say that, you know, kind of at a, we need, we need to help planning commission and we need to help this community reset. I have been under extraordinary pressure since I've come in to help with that reset, to help with the staff, to help, help them have stability in what they bring forward and so that you know what to act as well. Um, so, you know, coming back to this, this project, we sat down and we, we did, we had probably, we've gone through a lot of alternatives analysis in this as well, right? So we said, okay, let's, let's, let's strictly interpret the code. Let's look at what's immediately adjacent. Um, let's really have a deep philosophical discussion about variances, right? Variances are intended to be an extraordinary remedy, not a um, you know, let's put three of them forward. And, you know, prior to, 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 to Walt coming on board and his team coming on board, that these discussions were already happening. You know, what will, what will serve the community the best? What will increase housing without putting too much pressure on neighbors? On resources? Um, so, you know, it, it, the conversation you guys are having here, we've been having this for months and I, I appreciate you asking, um, asking this. I think that it is very reasonable to consider putting restrictions on this. Um, you know, it felt, it felt more awkward to us as planners. You know, I'm not, we're not saying this as necessarily a Realtor, as um, as an individual architect or, or a neighbor, but as planners, what is coming forward tonight makes the most sense because it touches all the right points. We're not recommending variances. And at the same time, we're also not saying to, to, to anyone who wants to bring housing into the community, it's going to be impossible to do it here. We're, we're trying, we've worked hard to try to figure out how to balance all of these um, acknowledging that the zone, that a zoning change may not go through. But, but we really didn't feel that, and don't feel that this is, sorry, little poodle. Um, we really didn't feel that with the, the proposal coming forward and the requested lower number of units, um, that it would be as controversial as, as it is because we're, we're trying to match the land to the use. The broader land use plan in the community as well. Um, this is another part of the very broad philosophical discussion we've been having at the planning level. It, it really isn't helping us um, because it really hasn't analyzed this at a parcel level. I'm going kind of all over the place. I'm, I'm following your model here, Tip, in um, in that. So we've can, we've also had discussions with the development team now and past about the, the slopes. And ensuring they understand the challenges with the slopes. They understand the challenges with the height variance, that, that these, the heights are not going to be encouraged or well received, especially given the project that's just, you know, a couple of blocks over. Um, so no, I, I, you know, a very long-winded answer to your question, David, I, I don't necessarily think we should let the past dictate the future. But I think that, I think that past development and the mistakes or the unanticipate, unanticipated consequences can certainly inform us as we move forward. Because like I said, we recognize at, and, and at a very, very cellular level almost, this is, this must be considered a reset in terms of how we consider development and what the community wants. And um, we just need to be thoughtful about it and put good planning to use in it.
I, I guess, um, I just wanted, you know, just to clarify, David, what, when I talk about being burned by the past, I'm not talking about developers. I'm just talking about the fact that we didn't quite visualize what we were going to get. And my concern here, you know, besides the long-term ramifications we're headed for by doing this, is just having three larger structures on that hillside and how it's going to be perceived and how it's going to look. And um, my sense is if there is some separation between single-family dwellings, there will still be some air there. So, you know, there will be a more vis- attractive visual setting. And I think Carrie was, had her hand up first.
Do we ever do story polls?
Pardon?
Do we ever require story polls?
Well, I, I actually requested to have the, the, the structures staked out and polled so that we see the height and have a way to recognize that. And that was shot down and I was told that they don't want to do that until they get, they don't want to go forward with that until the rezoning. So it's kind of like we have to, you know, put our faith and hope that they're going to do something nice.
I'll, I would like to clarify that, Alan. Um, that was really more at a planning level that height variance, the, the formality and the exactness of that is still being worked out. And so what was originally brought forth, that initial, here's what we're, they're thinking for a height they were looking at, that is not where they're at now. And so if they put, if they, if they illustrated the height based on how the project originally was discussed with us at planning, that would be misleading. And we would lead you down a path that may not be accurate. So um, we do feel that it is not unreasonable. We're, we're tightening up the height with the group now. We did an onsite visit last week and we really looked at what, what can be done, what should be done, what's the height corridor to try to get it as low as possible. We've, um, you know, we've asked them to, we've asked them to, to make significant reductions in the height. And we're, we're going to be within, as of last Friday, it looks like we're going to be really close to possibly not even needing. We, they may not be needing a height variance. So that's part of the reason why we didn't state that we should ask the developer to do a height at this point. Um, because that's changing. Um, in terms of the layout, Michelle and I again, sat down and we had, getting back to this discussion of what is it that is before you now? And what is before you now is the request for a zoning change? And why is that zoning change being requested? It has more to do with the attached buildings now. You know, as we move through this, I'm sure that they would stake it. Now, there is some regrading and that sort of thing on the lot that will impact and it's hard to visualize that. I'm sure that if we spoke with the developer and he, I'm sure that he would be willing to do that. Um, it, it was, I will, I will say that it was at a planning level because we felt that putting out premature stakes and premature heights before, where they really knew what they were going to ask for was going to lead you, you all as a group down the wrong path with false information.
Well, just, you know, thank you. Um, I guess that, that's exactly my point. We don't know what we're getting. And, and we don't know the dimensions of these structures. All we have is a rectangle on a piece of paper that doesn't say the sighting of it, the corners. Even when I asked to have the property staked, the front, the front corners were staked, but there's no back corners. We still don't know where the property is and we don't know the sighting of the buildings and that is a real concern. And even if there's not a height variance, if they are on a hillside, even without a height variance, they can still be pretty tall. Because the way we calculate, if it, you know, we don't know how deep it's going to go into the slope. And, and that right there, you know, every 10 feet you, you go up, that's five feet higher in elevation that you get. And that's my concern is we have no idea what the dimensions and what the sighting of those structures are. And that's, that's, you know, so basically, we're just basically writing a blank check and hoping that it doesn't bounce. And uh, let's see, I, I guess, um, Carrie, you had your hand up first.
Well, I, I guess my question is if, if it's, if we say, okay, we're not going to give them the change and they're going to build three massive, single-family homes, the same square footage of the, you know, twin homes. Have we accomplished anything? Because we can't limit the size of the single-family homes.
We can, we can ensure that there will be setbacks.
So that, that's.
Twenty front, twenty-five rear. And so, and, and it may, you may be right, but, but, you know, just looking at other duplexes, they can be pretty big. And um, so that, that's my concern that we don't have. Uh, Gene, you're not talking too much again. I think you have to unmute.
You're not unmuted.
Okay, uh, sorry about that. Um, what I was going to say is that, you know, I guess one of my concerns, and, and I think it's easier to build a single-family house and not need that height variance. When you talk about these uh, almost every townhome I've seen, they tend to want to put the, the garage on the bottom and then they got to have the height variance to get the two stories above the, above the garage. And you end up with these monstrosities, too tall. As I've mentioned several times, there's a complex in town that they did not sell. And there's another one that I know they had trouble with that's right on Ruxton. But the one I refer to that's the most problem is on El Paso. And when it was built, they, they got a height variance and they couldn't sell those suckers. And that's what I'm saying is that just because they're going to build them on the Colorado Springs side, that doesn't necessarily mean we need to do that on, on the Manitou side. It, I mean, I, I think the, I, I just know what most people think they want. And I understand they can't make as much money. Well, I'm sure there's a way around that as far as they can make some money. If they got the right kind of house, they can make the money in Manitou. Um, I know that. I think most of you know that. But yes, the dirt's more expensive here. But it's also more desirable here versus out on the prairie to the east. That's, that's all I have to say.
David?
Uh, yeah, I understand what you're unease about uh, the design, uh, Alan. Um, I am reassured by both the comments of Ms. Cotera in the beginning and Christine now. Um, obviously, there's been a lot of collaboration. Uh, and I'm, well, I'm willing to put my faith in our planning department. So, thank you.
Oh.
Alan?
Yeah.
I just, I wanted to add one point that we didn't mention earlier in considering the attached single-family homes rather than detached, was taking into consideration some of the concerns that the stables have expressed um, in terms of runoff and minimizing the development of the larger parcel. Um, that, that was actually part of the discussion as well, was, was trying to take into consider, consideration that. Um, so I just wanted to share that. I don't think we, we discussed that earlier.
Uh, Justin, you've been quiet. Do you have anything, any thoughts?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, going through that area, I, I honestly think it could go either way. I think you could do townhomes or duplexes right in that area, but you could also do them wrong. Um, I guess my concern with this is that, you know, we're being asked to rezone property based on a, a promise to build duplexes a certain way, but we really aren't given the full information as you've kind of highlighted, Alan. Um, so I just kind of find that odd that, you know, we have to take that leap of faith to do that. And I, like, I haven't lived here as long as some of you have, so I, I, I take um, stock in what you say about the past experiences a lot. So I am troubled about, I guess, um, I could see approving a duplex project, but maybe not as a rezoning package if that makes sense. I just, I, I just find that troublesome without having a complete package of information.
Uh, Tip, you need to, oh, you're being good.
Yeah, I teach on this, so I'm pretty used to the little finger going like that now. Now, um, I don't, you know, it is hard. Uh, I take your point about not knowing what it would look like, given how we do heights, because um, 12 years ago, when there was the proposal to develop the, the um, Wheeler House, there was all this discussion about, you know, how you calculate the height and all that. And when they put the post up there, it overwhelmed the, the, the neighborhood. It was shocking how, how high it was. And so I can see that if you don't have those markers, that it's difficult to envision what it's going to look like, given that, you know, we do this weird calculation about taking the average from here and there and all that to figure out where the grade is and look up. And that's important in these um, properties that are great, that have such um, slopes on them. So I do take that and worries me a little bit. Um, and, and I'm also thinking about how um, we had, when we did the master plan, uh, that when we were talking about that Cliff House West Wheeler property, that there was a discussion that the parts of the property should be in conformity with the adjacent um, neighborhoods. So that, for example, the northern part of that property should conform more to what Aggett Hill is like and the residential neighborhood and the part that Font Park would conform more to the business district um, on the same property. With that in mind, it's perfectly, there are many condo developments that have more than one type of, of development on it. You can have a condo development that has apartment building and has um, duplexes and also has single housing. There's nothing that says you can't do that. And so um, and it can be done in incredible, incredibly attractive ways and very holistic ways to bring the neighborhood sense coming together. So I think that's doable, um, you know, and so it does, you, I guess you see what I'm, I mean, I'm getting, thinking about the philosophical issues you, you raised, Christine, that in, that in these issues of trying to be responsible to the communities, what the property has been, what the potential risk is in terms of not, you know, like, I don't think there's bad faith by the developer at all, honestly. Um, but, but not being able to visualize it yet and all that before we, this, yeah, I, I have to say that, like Justin, I feel a little, you know, I still, I feel pretty mixed about it.
Okay, well. Would anybody like to offer a motion or?
Is there a way to have, um, is, would there be? Is it a possibility to postpone this until we get the development plan?
Um, that's a question for you, Christine or Michelle.
Michelle, you're muted. Do you want to comment on this? Want to make a run at it first?
So certainly we could, we could look at that with the developer. I mean, the application is in, you do have information even in your current packet showing the proposed layout and at least one depiction that shows kind of a concept plan of elevations, but there, there's other information that's already been developed. It is assuming that it's under the general residential zone. That's what's been developed. So we could bring that forward and review it. And at that point, if you all are comfortable, you could approve the rezoning and, you know, in the major development, or, you know, however that worked. Usually you don't see that level of development detail till we know what the zone is going to be so that we know what that design is going to look like, but it's, it has been, you know, we have the, the application in. So we could certainly do that. It's a little unorthodox and certainly runs the risk of if you don't like it, then, you know, they have to go back and redesign, but they are going to have to do that anyway if you deny the rezoning tonight. So, you know, if that's what you feel that you need, you need to approve the development concurrently with the zone. That would certainly be better than just out of hand, I think, denying it.
Yeah, I think, you know, in recent history, I know both the project on Becker's and the one across from the skateboard park, we did see the whole package. And so we knew what we were getting. And so
Then in your packet is, there's a great deal of information there. I think that the height is what is still, we're working, working through, trying to bring it down. The layout is, is, is pretty much there. I mean, so it could be, it could be a formal processing of the major development plan, like Michelle just said. But I don't foresee there's going to be as a part of that, really any new significant information that you don't already have.
Well, we don't, we don't have a understanding of where the structures will be on the hillside and height variance or not. We don't have a sense of how high they are. And to Tip's point, you know, that really was impactful for the, that Wheeler House development and informed the, the community. And I, I think that, you know, just to, to understand, to be able to visualize, because I see little rectangles, but I, you know, that doesn't say how big the structure is. It doesn't even have dimensions of those rectangles. I can pick something out and make it up, but you know, it's the specifics of it that could, could make it understandable that, that right now, we just don't have, we're just writing a blank check. And, and that's, that's really my concern.
Would it be helpful then to, to illustrate that if the development team did go out and, and staked each out? Now, a piece of it that that would be disconcerting to that conversation is, is in the way that the drawings are dimensioned in proportion to what's currently out there.
But I'm, I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Well, go ahead. I was just going to say, well, right now, you know, if you drove along that property and you were envisioning the three units or the three buildings on the Manitou Avenue side, there's, there's nothing on the rest of the property. And so they would look, you know, like they really stood out, you know. I think they have to be considered in context with the rest of the, rest of the property and how much is really going to be visible, given the other construction that's going to occur. But that, you know, you do have a site plan that shows the, the full, you know, the full project proposal that shows, you know, other buildings that are going to be closer to the road and along the entire frontage and everything. So.
Yeah, I was, I was out there and walking that property today. So, yeah, I mean, and you don't know how deep they're going to need to scrape to get it nestled back in there either, but.
Right, right. Because they could dig basements. They can have basements there. Right, that, that, and then how the lot is, is leveled out a bit because it is previously disturbed. You know, they're, they're can level that out without getting into the hillside a bit. So.
That, that's why I asked about the sighting and the story polls. I just thought it'd be helpful.
Sure. No, I, I agree with you on the story polls. When we're ready to, when, when I think we're closer on that height, that's I, I absolutely agree we should do that because it helps. I mean, you guys, the way you said, the way that height is calculated under current code is confusing.
Well, I don't know that it's confusing. It's just, it's different than if you just say 25 feet or 31 feet or 35 feet, it's relative to the sighting on the slope.
Right, which is different. You know, when most, a lot of development teams or builders, when they come out, we have to walk them through. It, it is, it is different. There's a learning curve. And as well, it's easy to mislead planning commission by how that calculation is done. Not that I don't say mislead in a way that's nefarious, but it, it's difficult to truly visualize it. To your point, I'm going to go, Alan.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the outcome on that, another project might have been different if there had been polls up to really, really graphically show what it was going to feel like on the street.
And neighborhoods change, right? We've talked quite a bit about that project and the variance that went through is less than what was originally discussed and thought to be favorable. So that is one of the challenges too, that the desires of the neighborhood change and how to plan for that appropriately and properly. That's, that's, that's our challenge.
Well, I think that one was more a, a case of just not appreciating what we're being told. And so anyway, at this point, I guess we can vote to approve, deny, table if anybody wants to.
I, I think that we have the whole major development plan process in front of us. I don't think we're writing a blank check to anybody on this. This application. So on that note, I would like to make a motion to approve RE 2101 with staff's one condition.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, and David, seconds?
I second the motion.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
You know, so I've been equivocating back and forth and all that. I really, I, I'm, you guys know me, I'm usually pretty sure how I think about things. And I feel 50/50 about this, honestly. I also went, I think we all were thinking about this. I also went today as well. And I don't want to put words in Carrie's mouth, but I, I kind of feel, I, I responded in a similar way that I think Carrie did at the beginning of our conversation, that to me, it seems to be in keeping with the neighborhood. And I also don't know whether having three very large single houses there would be any better. And I'm appreciative of Christine, you're talking about the worry about runoff and the, you know, the, the impermeability and all that question. So I think that I'm 51% to, on the side of, of approval. But then I think that I would want, it is clear how we are, right? That I'm not that interested in hearing about variances when it comes up. I'm not, I'm, I mean, even six inches. And I'm not that interested in, I want, I, I think that I want all the stipulations put into the, the restrictions that the builder said that he would be willing to do. Okay, so that's how I feel. And so I, you know, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, then all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so this motion carries four to three. And, and this is a recommendation to city council and they will see this, I guess, next month.
Right. And we'll start working on the major development.
Maybe that'll be available for council at least, and they'll get to decide on it.
I had a quick question for Christine, planner. I wrote it to Dylan, because I've had these real, I'm having these very long days right now, working in Zoom all the time. Would it be possible for Gloria to replace me now for the next part? Or do you think it's essential that I stay?
I think she could replace you.
Yeah, there's no reason why you can't.
Yeah, she's in the audience. I'll pull her over.
Would that be okay? Would you guys forgive me? But, you know, like, I'm kind of, I'm really kind of it's just really, this is really, you know, been a hard time. So, so if you don't, if you forgive me, thank you. I think I'll take, take that up. Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too. Take care. Bye.
Okay, so we're going to bring Gloria over. We brought Karen over, but we're supposed to bring Gloria over.
That list switches on me sometimes while I'm trying to change people.
Okay, it looks like we have a few extra people now.
Kristen doesn't need to come over.
Yeah, we somehow ended up with Kristen over too. Let's send her back. Not that we don't like Kristen. She's a perfectly pleasant human being. Okay, there we go.
Okay, so so item six is on the agenda, although it's been withdrawn. I'm not sure why it's on the agenda, but I assume we'll be doing five and seven at the same time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll do item variance 2103, front yard setback, six feet where 15 is required. 106 Washington Avenue, Mark Gilliland of Cornerstone Design Build applicant on behalf of Jason Rash owner. And variance 2105, rear, rear yard setback, 12 feet where 15 is required. 106 Washington Avenue, same applicant.
Did you want to share something, Dylan?
Yeah, I was just going to comment, the reason item six is still on the agenda is because it was one of the items actually postponed by motion in the last meeting.
Okay.
Well, good evening, planning commission and members of the public. I'm Karen Birchfield. I'm a senior planner with the planning department. I'm going to present a, a review of the staff report that was prepared for this request and I'm going to share a PowerPoint if that's, if that's okay, Dylan, can I, can I share the screen?
You can, Karen. Go ahead.
All right. Let's see here.
While Karen's pulling that up, I want to welcome her to presenting variances and facilitating those with planning commission. And as you'll see, Karen has, will be bringing forward a slightly different approach in the presentation. And so welcome, Karen. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Yeah, I thought I'd just share some of the components of, from the, from the staff report in the packet. Nothing here that you haven't seen already, just kind of some touch points to sort of guide my discussion. So, um, yes, as the chair noted, whoops. There are two requests before us this evening. You, you heard this at the last meeting on February 10th. The, the three variances, variance requests were presented. There was quite a bit of feedback from the commission that I shared in the report. The commission did vote to table the request and had some direction for the applicant. Really a common theme was that the commissioners agreed that they thought the, the concept could be redesigned to avoid side yard variance. The applicant has done a number of different revisions and settled on this one. And so this request is for two variances to build the garage, as noted. A, a front setback variance request to encroach nine feet into the 15 foot and a rear setback variance request to encroach three feet into that setback. And I just thought I'd start out by sharing a parcel map of the neighborhood, not exact, it's from assessors. Apologize, this may be a little bit light to read, but just want to give them sense of the range of parcel sizes and, and shapes in the neighborhood. And the subject property is at the corner of Washington and Lafayette. It is an older home. It was built early 1900s, but is no longer considered contributing to the Upper Washington Historic District. The lot is almost 14,000 square feet with a single existing dwelling. Some photos of the site, the applicant also provided a number of photos in the packet. This photo on the left is the view of the frontage of, of the, of the property as it appears from Washington Ave. And this view in the center is the west, the west side of the property. And then on the right is a view of the rear side of the property as it abuts with the neighbor to the south. And so Dylan generated this topographic map of a part of the neighborhood, which I, I think is helpful. Just trying to analyze this a little bit better. Clearly, there is varied topography in the neighborhood. These are actually two foot contours also. It is quite, quite severely sloped on this, on this particular property. And so this is the, the site plan that the applicant provided to demonstrate where the proposed garage would be located on the site. This is their existing dwelling. This is Washington Ave. And so with this proposal, they are making some changes. Essentially, the garage has been shifted to the east slightly to retain the full side yard setback. They are proposing to remove two of the sheds, the two sheds and pergola on the property and to incorporate that storage space within the structure. And so that allowed them to move this to the east a little bit more. They have reduced the depth of the garage area from 28 feet to 24 feet. And so that allowed them to reduce the encroachment into the rear setback so that that encroachment is now three feet. The building shifted one foot to the north from the previous proposal. So it is proposed to be set back at six feet from the property line or encroach nine be set back at six feet from the property line or encroach nine feet into that front setback. And so you probably have a fairly good idea of the background information. And I apologize, this text is quite small. I just wanted to share the seven variance approval criteria. And I'll just briefly touch on the staff analysis for these. The first criteria is that the applicant would suffer hardship as a result of the applicant, application of the code hardship that's not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same zoning district. Because of you unusual circumstances at this property such as boundaries, existing structures or existing topography. And staff did note that the majority of the, of the homes on Washington Ave, you have a garage. It really ranges from none for a few to one to two. The newer homes tend to have the two car garages. And other observations are, well, the property is large, that the configuration does have that sort of constrained area on the western side where the most appropriate building site on the property is. And so staff did find that the application provided justification to meet this criterion. The second poses that there are no design alternatives or alternative locations for structures that might eliminate the need for the variance request or reduce the amount of request needed. And I think this is the pertinent one here, and much of the commission's discussion at the last meeting focused on this idea that there, there may be some other alternatives. And so in this case, as I mentioned, with this recent alternative, the, the footprint has been, I would say reconfigured and shifted a bit to reduce the encroachment into the rear setback and reduce the, the amount of building encroaching there. So staff did feel that this criterion was met. For the third, we're asked to consider if enforcement of the provisions of the code deprives the applicant of rights enjoyed by a majority of their properties, properties in the same zone district. Staff cited the observation that a majority of the homes in the area do have a garage and felt that this criterion was met. Fourth, asked us to consider if the, the request, if the need does not result from actions of the applicant or his or her agent. We found that they did not result from their actions and that there was sufficient justification to meet this criterion. The fifth is to consider whether reasonable protections are afforded adjacent properties. And so in this case, we did at the last meeting note comments from two two owners of the property to the south. What, one of the owners did communicate with me later this evening and noted that they aren't, weren't able to attend and that they weren't quite sure what to say, that it's better, and they trusted that the commission would do what's best in, in this case. And so as pertains to this criterion, staff did note that a geologic hazards evaluation will be required in relation to concerns about slope stability or the, the integrity of retaining walls that would be built to accommodate the structure. Also, a rain, a stormwater and drainage report will be required to make sure that the drainage does not increase past historic flows. And in addition, the decreased encroachment into the rear setback also goes to this concern as well. And finally, we did not receive additional negative comments from our other reviewers in the city or site agencies. And so staff found this criterion to be addressed through the application and the recent revisions to the concept design. The sixth criterion asked us, asked us to confirm that the requested variance will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the surrounding property. So asked us to look a little bit more broadly, but also, also considering neighbors. The applicant noted that the variance would not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or distract from views. The applicant has incorporated design features into into the, the garage as pertaining to a historic commission comment. Staff also notes that the existing sheds and pergola would be removed. And as well notes that there are existing stone walls along the property that are deemed historic. The commission provided a recommendation or comment that any new retaining wall should be rebuilt and incorporate that stone. I think as staff, we saw that as really a critical aesthetic aspect of the neighbor to the south's property that that wall is rebuilt properly to the standard that we expect. And so we added a condition that that retaining wall design should be submitted to staff prior to a permit being issued. And I think overall that we found the, that the revisions in that they eliminated the need for a side yard variance and with the additional conditions decreasing the extent of the rear variance that the proposal does meet this criterion and found overall that criterion seven was met as well. And so overall, again, staff recommended approval of these two variances. Incorporated, as I mentioned, a number of conditions, several basic conditions to just formalize the, the variance request. Additional conditions about technical material we need to see such as a geologic hazard report, stormwater and drainage plan and new retaining wall design. And then finally, wanted to confirm that those two sheds will indeed be demolished prior to issuing a building permit as the applicant was providing that as a basis for including some of the new space within the garage for storage. So hopefully that lays out the request and I think some of the pieces of information that accompany it. I know that Mark Gilliland, the, the representative of the applicant is within the Zoom space and so welcome any comments from him or, or questions that commissioners may have.
Thanks. I, I like the format of your presentation. That was great. Very coherent.
Thank you.
So any questions for staff before we bring the, talk to the applicant?
Alan, I have a question for Karen. Karen, and maybe this is more of a question for the applicant, but I don't quite understand the comment that there is no alternative location. Why wouldn't the existing parking to the east definitely be an alternative? And actually require, not require a rear yard variance?
That area has significant slope. But I, I would defer to the applicant probably as to why they didn't select that.
Before any other questions for staff, before we bring the applicant? Okay, well, let's bring the applicant in and oh, I actually, I do have one question, just a for procedural thing. This had gone before the HPC. And do they have to review this again, or is it similar enough that it's done?
I I'm gonna defer to Michelle on that one.
Michelle had to step away from the meeting. No, it's not our expectation that needs to go back to HPC. This is similar enough.
Okay, well, let's do we need to share this? Can we stop the screen sharing now so we can?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, let me do that. Oops, if I can figure that out. Okay, there we go.
Okay, so okay. Can you, Bart, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. There we go. Mark Gilliland, one one zero zero five, South Holmes, Colorado Springs, Colorado.
Okay. Your thoughts on the staff recommendations?
Karen, I thought that was a great job, well presented. And really, she nailed just about everything. The one thing I would like to add is, you know, from a design perspective, I feel that getting rid of those three structures that are there and making one structure will be the biggest improvement to the entirety of the whole site. That'll clean it up quite a bit. Right now, honestly, it, it's cluttered. If you guys have driven by, so that would make a, a much, much needed improvement, I think. And David, to your question, we did look at that park into the east. There are two problems with that is once you get back about sixteen feet, maybe eighteen feet off of the street, it drops severely, very severely. And also, the power line is much, much closer. It's pretty much right on top of the curb line. And we have to stay ten feet away from that power line laterally. So just may basically make us ten feet back off the property line. And there's really only about eight feet of buildable land left before it drops so severely. It's just now, wouldn't work at all.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Mike?
Hi, Mark. I've never, I've never designed a garage in my life. What, what is the typical depth? So when, when you pull the vehicle in that, that distance, what is that a minimum, I guess, dimension?
For a normal neighborhood, it's twenty four feet deep. You know, in smaller spaces, they, they usually go down to twenty two. We've minimized this quite a bit. It's about as tight as it can go. We don't really want to go any smaller. It'd be pretty difficult.
Okay. And if, if memory serves, last month, the setback was ten foot. Is that true?
Yeah, ten or nine, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? David?
I'm a little bit mystified. There was a proposal for a workout area. And now that's suddenly gone and there's a storage area with a lot of windows on three sides. I gotta say, Mr. Gill, that, that looks dubious, to put it mildly to me.
The windows in the front were designed just for looks from the street. Side is actually a door. It's an access. The one in the rear could be eliminated if you think that would be better, but we thought for breaking up the rear side of the building, it was good. And not to say what all he's going to use it for, but he agreed to take down that second large shed. And he's gonna have to have a place for his stuff, so.
Oh, I'm all in favor of windows, but I'm also in favor of transparency. And that's, as I say, how it, how it got from being a workout area, which was questioned by the planning commission into a storage area. I don't know. I, I'm prepared to support the request, but that is not that's not something that struck me as, as positive.
Any other comments? Okay, do you have anything else to add, Mr. Gill?
Nope, I think that was about it. I think we already mentioned the minimization of it. So, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll open this to the public now. If anybody in the audience would like to speak to this, raise your hand. It looks like right now there's no attendees, so probably no hands are gonna raise. So we'll close the public comment period of the hearing and we can deliberate. Any thoughts or Carrie?
Well, I know when we were talking about this last month, we were concerned about the general added bulk in the neighborhood. And the frontage went from twenty eight feet to thirty eight feet. So we added a hundred and twelve square feet, if I do the math right, from what was proposed last month to this month. Are you referring to the, the footprint? So the footprint from what was proposed last month and the square footage of the building to what's proposed this month. So last month, it was twenty two by twenty eight. This month, it's thirty eight by twenty one. Drops down to sixteen for fourteen feet of that, but so the building's gotten bigger by a hundred and twelve square feet. Is that correct? Um, I, you're, you're close. I estimated that yeah, yes, that's correct. Yep, the, the footprint is larger. And there is there's a longer distance of encroachment in the front than there was before. Right, yeah, we went from twenty eight feet to thirty eight feet.
Karen, was there an elimination of, of the twelve by ten building? Wasn't there another ten by twelve? Wasn't there another building that?
Yeah, there was a ten by twelve shed that's was removed.
Right. Yes. So actually, there, there are two sheds that have been removed and one of, one of the sheds was existing and did, did actually also encroach into the front setback. And with the original design, they were intending to keep that. And so they have removed that with this design. So I guess rather than two buildings encroaching, you have one building encroaching. That's one consistent front elevation. Is that, is that an accurate way of describing that, Mr. Gilliland?
I think he's gone over.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it looks to me like the rear encroachment, which was most concerning, has been reduced from well, besides the setback being larger now. It was twenty eight, now it's twenty four in terms of the encroachment on their, on the rear. And yes,
That's correct. Yeah, I think that was really the, the focus of the effort was to reduce the the encroachment into that rear setback.
And then the whole thing was shifted to the east. Sort of, I think that's east anyway, towards the building.
Towards
Because that shed was
Right. Right. So as it was before, they, they couldn't shift the building to the, they needed to remove that other shed to ship the building essentially.
So it's fourteen by sixteen.
Karen, is that why there's the, um, condition put on by staff that the two buildings must be removed? Before a building permit is issued to ensure this plays out the way was, is being intended to plan.
Okay, yes, I mean, you know, logically you'd think they would have to be removed to build a new garage. But because the applicant is relying on the argument that the space is replacing those sheds. I, I thought it was appropriate to. Thank them that.
Well, th- this is actually the third. Design that we, the first one I think was withdrawn, if I recall, um, and that one was. Interesting. I, I, I think we should give kudos to all the, um, all who's involved for coming up with this design. Which I think is, out of the three is by far the best. My concern last month was the. The neighbor downhill, which in this case, um, is the rear setback. And again, they, they, they went from, um. Uh, ten feet to twelve in, in, in the positive direction, so I mean. I'm, I'm happy with what they've come up with. It looks, it, it, this is a very clean, um, design and. The really, the, the big deal is the, the three feet. Towards the neighbor's side and, um, I, I think that would be. Acceptable.
And it's, and also got rid of that side setback, so.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, anybody interested in, uh, tossing out a motion on this?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll make a recommendation. I'm just trying to pull it up on the other screen. Variance twenty-one oh three and variance twenty-one oh five with staffs. Seven. Conditions.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, and Carrie seconds that. Is there any more discussion on this item? And all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. And so we're done with that one finally. And, um, moving on since, uh, let's see, uh, next item is other business. Christine?
We're great, thank you. And I'll take the next item as well. Michelle had to step away, so I'll, um, which there will be nothing else in that other item, but. I did want to provide just a quick update to all of you. With regard to the code rewrite project, um, I committed to you all last year that as the project ramped up, I would. Each month apprise you of where we are and we are really getting into the meat of it now. Two and a half weeks ago, we had our first public engagement or public outreach session. That was very successful. We had three sessions. Each was about fifty minutes long. Um, and we pushed that out, uh, via email, social media. And, and then of course communicating that amongst stakeholders in the community. Um, with the participation on that was really strong. Um, our first session, we had, I believe. Twenty-three or twenty-four participants, all told, we ended up with about thirty. Um, which I'm told based on historical turnout for, um, public engagement events in Manitou. That is reasonable. Um, so there's still, I think, a lot of work to be done. This was just meant to really launch things. As well, uh, about three weeks ago, we launched the survey, the first mini survey on the city's website. And, um, I don't know where we are as of today. I'll get an update tomorrow in terms of how many folks have participated in that. Um, I encourage each of you to, to go and participate and take the survey if you haven't already. Um, you are stakeholders. You know, we're careful in this to define stakeholders as, um, residents. Um, business owners, um, individuals who are in boards and commissions, basically anyone in the community who's impacted by the revision of code. And so I want, want to be sure that each of you, um, are, have that opportunity to participate. Following this meeting, I will send to you the PowerPoint presentation that I took to council last week. To, to share that update with them. They had not received as much of an update as you guys have been getting each month. So that really compiled, um, two months prior, plus that first public engagement event. So I'll share that with you in the interest of time. I won't, I won't be too long-winded on that. As well, the email that I send out to you will have a link to the city's website. Um, if you were not able to participate in the, in one of those outreach sessions. We have interesting software opportunities where we have stitched together a video of the three sessions. So that is one video and you can actually take, um, you can actually participate in the activity that was being run live. And so your, your input counts there as well, so we'll have both of those up and running through the, I think the thirty-first, the end of the month. And so the next big item for this group. In addition to everything I just said is that, um, council is interested. Um, I floated the idea to them. And they are interested in having a joint work session with this group. Um, that would be facilitated by staff and the consultants to really start digging into the meat. Of what it is we're trying to accomplish. That would be an opportunity for, um, for all individuals who are participating. Uh, you know, uh, to bring, what are your concerns? What are your hopes? What are your dreams? Are there specific areas of the code? That you want to see addressed as well? Are there areas in the code in this project? That have been identified as being incorporate, is incorporated in this project, but you don't feel as appropriate. All of that is really important to us. Um, so there's been, as of today, there's been three different dates that have been suggested. For this, so I will as well forward those dates to this group, um, in an email. And if you're amenable to participating in a joint session, I think that would be fantastic. And that's the bulk of the update on that project. And are there any questions, any concerns so far? With how we're rolling things out in this first, we're only a couple of weeks into this, but any concerns so far?
No, I, I guess I was thinking that the one thing that. I wasn't, it was cute when we did this interactive thing and we saw the votes coming in real time. I kind of think that can tend to skew results. And, um, you know, when you see, oh, more people want this item or that. So I'm, I'm not a necessarily a fan of that tool. It might be more. Uh, realistic to not show the results until after everybody's weighed in.
Fair enough.
That's, that's just my personal opinion that.
Sure.
Sort of a herd effect sometimes.
Yeah, it could be. Some people love that stuff too, so.
Oh, sure, it's cute. It's really cute, but I just question the validity.
We're trying to be really creative. I see Karen smiling there. We're trying to be very creative. The consultant team, all of the consultant teams that we interviewed. Had a lot of really good, interesting ways of engaging, uh, stakeholders virtually. Which, we, you know, we're really challenged because we, we can't pull everyone together in a large room, so. Um, there's, there's gonna be, it's gonna be quite a bit, so I appreciate that input. Thank you, Ellen.
Christine, did you say that you were gonna send us that video?
I'll send you the link to the website where it is on the website. We've set up a specific project page at the city's website. That's hosting some of the materials.
Yeah, I apologize, I wasn't available that day.
That's okay.
Yeah.
It was the day of the Manny Awards, right?
It was, it was a very busy day for staff, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, so if, um, oh, then any notice of council action updates or?
No, I do not have any notice of council action updates. Um, Dylan, was there anything you were aware of that I may have missed? Michelle, I didn't think so, so there's.
No, there wasn't.
Christine, the, the, the short-term rentals, there is a one-year moratorium in effect, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I could share one thing from last night's council meeting that I thought was fascinating. Just to, for those who haven't, didn't watch the meeting, um. You know, they had a big presentation on the transportation and mobility plan. And the cog representative Gary Pearson gave a presentation towards the end. And one of the things he said that they were planning to do was. Um, have someone at Ruxton in Manitou Avenue. Um, metering who can go down Ruxton. Which, um, was kind of mind-boggling to imagine someone standing on a state highway. Controlling traffic, but. That's what they said they were gonna do.
Yeah, it's a really.
Didn't have a reservation for parking like at the Iron Springs or at the cog or.
Or bar.
That's, that'd back stuff up, wouldn't it?
No, that's what we're.
Well, it's bizarre.
Trying to model that out and there are traffic engineers who are participating in some of this modeling. Um, you know, trying to bring traffic, trying to prevent traffic from getting up Ruxton in the first place, right? Trying to cut down on the cruising of, up and down Ruxton. And so, um, the ideas that have been explored have been pretty far and wide, I'll be honest. And so with this, it was, you know, really the city, city staff, um, and, and the cog. Really liked the idea of, of, yeah, basically almost like a parking attendant, you know, like. If you're not a resident or you don't have a, if you don't have a reason to be up Ruxton, don't go up Ruxton. So how do we, how do we discourage that? And so the next part of that, as you just stated, is, okay, what's next? You know, so now you've got, you've brought that, that congestion that's up on Ruxton down to the roundabout. Now how do we manage it from there? So it's, um, thank you for calling that out, Ellen. It's been a very challenge, that's a challenging endeavor also.
Yeah, that was, I felt like I was on drugs or anything, something that I misheard it to the notion of. A Broadmoor. Employee. Controlling who goes on Ruxton. I, 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 I just, I cannot imagine that being reality. It just made no sense.
Yeah, they gonna let me ride my bike?
Huh?
Would they let me ride my bike up there? I mean, all those things, right?
Well, I'm, you know, I, I imagine if, if they try to implement this, I'll just. Exercise my rights and go up there, just, I mean, it's, it's, it's nonsense, I think. I mean, I know they do that over by the Broadmore. They actually do something out there at the junction of Mesa and Lake and. But I think it's gonna be a hard, heavy lift on a state highway and Manitou Avenue is a state highway, so. I, I don't think, and, and, and then, you know, things like liability, it just seemed pretty amazing. But. That was the highlight of the meeting, actually.
It's been the highlight of quite a few meetings, let me tell you.
Can I ask something real quick before we leave?
Sure.
I know we're trying to simulate a, a typical city hall type planning commission meeting, but how come we don't get to see the participants?
I've asked that. Oh, we get to see them. For the planning commission.
Well, am I doing something wrong? I mean, I, I can't see the list of people that are, are, uh.
Oh, maybe the audience, not the.
The audience, right.
Oh, yeah, well, do you see at the bottom? Do you see participants?
Yeah, and all I can, I'm on an iPad, but all I can see is us.
Oh, you don't see attendees?
No.
Okay, well, I see them.
Well. You're the man.
Well, so we'll have to figure out, I mean, is anyone else on an iPad or is it just?
No, I don't see the audience. I, I can click on the audience and, and then look at their names and scroll through them, but I can't see their images.
Is that what you're saying, Mike? You want to see their images?
No, 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 just, just to like, as if we were in a, um, you know, in city hall. It'd be, I don't know if two people are watching us or two hundred.
Oh, yeah, well, that must be a bug with iPads then, because. I always rely on that. I always look to see who's in our meeting and, and it's a complaint I've had with, with the council meetings. You know, the thing I miss when I go to council meeting, I don't know who else is there. I only know who's on the panel.
Well, if I.
See the attendees, but.
So if I, sorry, if I hit participants, I see panelists ten and then. Um, all of us and no, that's all I see, nothing else.
And you don't see a button for attendees?
No.
Should be a tab for attendees, although right now it's zero, so maybe.
The only participants right now are. Us.
Yeah, but yeah, I always look at the attendees, so we'll have to investigate. Or you'll have to get a laptop or something.
Well, you know, so can we encourage the, the property owner to at least say a few syllables versus? The architect, for example?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
Hmm, that's a good question. You know, in a number of these applications, it's the, the architect who's actually the applicant on behalf of.
Right.
Property owner, um, you know, we can definitely, at staff level, we can certainly encourage it. I don't know that we can demand it, but we can certainly encourage it. And most homeowners are willing to be here.
Okay, all right, good, thanks.
Yeah, anything else? Shall we adjourn then?
Zoom off.
Okay.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.